My name is Veronica, I'm the unofficial risk manager of this trip. Very little caving experience except the touristy trip to Luray's Cave in Virginia.
Sounds great, that's a pretty cave.
I'm Mr. Park, 43, no caving experience.
No caving experience, oh, we're gonna have fun.
I'm Eve, I'm 12, I have no caving experience and I'm kinda nervous.
Kinda nervous?
I'm Penelope, I'm 16, no caving experience and I'm excited for this.
You're what?
I'm excited.
You're excited?
Yes.
You don't look excited, come on. I'm excited!
Very excited!
There you go, that's it, that's it.
Hi, I'm Greta, I'm 14 and I'm also very excited.
There we go.
I'm Zoe, I'm 12, I caved once but it was like when we were like walking through a cave.
Okay.
I'm very excited.
Very excited, alright.
I'm Olivia, I'm 12, I have very little caving experience except like walking through a cave. I'm excited.
Do you know which one?
Uh, no, it was like when I was six.
When you were six, so that was like just a little while ago?
I'm 12!
Hi, my name's Ally, I'm 12 years old and I've only had like a little bit of caving experience like walking through like Olivia and I'm nervous.
Nervous, okay, here we go.
I'm Ally, I'm 12 and three quarters, no caving experience and I have mixed feelings.
Mixed feelings, ooh.
I'm Daniela, I'm 12, I went to the Ava caves in Virginia just like my mom and that's it, I'm super excited, this is dope.
That's why we wear helmets.
One foot.
You can use your hands on the floor, you're allowed to do that.
I'm in.
Watch your head. Just come on back here. Guys are doing good, sorry, just come on back so we can get everybody in this room. Everybody does it differently, so just take your time.
I need to take a picture.
Okay.
Am I allowed to have flash on?
Huh?
Flash?
Yeah, it doesn't work that way as well, oh, I'm sorry, forgot to warn you about your head. That's why we wear helmets. That's it, that's it, you got it, watch your head when you stand up. There we go, just come on back in here and have a seat, very good.
Oh yeah!
Watch your head, cause you're tall. There we go, there we go, okay, you got this?
Yes.
No problem! We can move back a bit if you want to, there's a room down there that you could stand up in, okay? And you could stand up down in there and then I'll be down there as soon as I can.
That's what you were talking about, a little bit of mundiness.
Oh, there's nothing, usually there's a puddle there.
Now I understand why people come out talking like, you know.
Yeah, you ain't seen nothing yet.
Oh my goodness, you got it.
This is why we're on the top, right? Very good guys, you're doing good, you guys are doing really good, watch your head.
I'm hitting my head on everything.
Good, I mean.
I meant predicament.
No, you're not, you're in a cave.
A cave is a problem all at once.
Yes. Watch your head. There we go. And we're through. Is yours the last one?
Yup.
Alright.
Now the first person up there, it's gonna be dark and you gotta light up the room. You're gonna be lighting up the room, so who wants to do?
Come on, a volunteer should.
Okay, your hands were faster, that makes you second. Do you want to do the outside or the inside, or underneath? Okay, hold up, back up a bit, up onto there. Okay, now hold on to that stump and onto this shelf right behind you, there, now put one foot here, here.
Which way?
Here, back here. There, so boost you up, you get up on that point, that helps. There, and then stick your foot in there, I'm gonna hold this. Okay, now keep your body over your feet and swing that foot over to here, okay? Perfect, perfect, now get your body over and then I'll just walk on up. Take your time, this is not a race, okay? Last one out gets to see everything. Okay, put your left foot here, your other left foot. There you go, and you're, okay, I'm gonna have to get, can you get your right? There, and there you go. That was a lot easier than I thought it was gonna be. Okay. What? Oh, it's very slippery, it's wet rock. That's it. Either foot, either foot, I was just messing with her, giving her a hard time. Foot there, hold on to a shelf that's behind your head, see that shelf there? This is like climbing 3D, it's like you got stuff behind you and over top of you that you can use. Put your foot up here, there you go, and then swing this foot up over here and keep your body over top of your feet. Okay? You got it, swing your foot over, put this one all the way over, there! That's perfect, you got it. Don't get too close to the edge guys, okay? I don't wanna have to pick up body parts before, there you go, hold on to that and swing your other foot over. Perfect, okay, get your body over your feet, there you go. Okay, just wait till she goes and then we're gonna wait until we have a traffic jam. Try to just step over, step over it instead of on top of things. Does that make sense? Swing your foot all the way over that formation right there, there you go. Now you can do it, now grab, grab the rock. Grab that rock, that you're holding on to there with your right hand, grab that, now you're up. Keep going straight. It's okay. There you go, you're doing good, okay, you're almost up to go. There you go, who's next? It's Greta, right? Okay, I'm trying to, trying to remember, okay, that's your left foot there, next one's here, you got it. Very good, very good, okay, put your... Left foot, right foot, whatever, it doesn't really make that much difference which foot, I'm just telling you what I prefer, okay? You wanna get up on that point, get your foot up on that point, okay? There you go, okay, can you get yourself over top of this foot and push off? You're not going anywhere, okay? That's it, that's it, perfect, stay over top of your feet, that's it, perfect. Just wait till she moves up a little bit more.
Hi Ally!
Hi Zoe!
Hold on top of that point, next foot on this little ledge here. You ready? It's okay, it's okay, take your time. That's good. There, now hold your foot, swing your other foot over to there. That's it, perfect. Next? Are you ready? Put one foot on this point, see, come over here, come over here, make it a little less here. Okay, I'll talk to friends. Okay, you wanna put one foot here, you're gonna put the next foot here and then the next foot over here. Now your hands, that stump there, you're gonna hold on to that stump and that shelf, okay? Keep your body over top of your feet so that your body's going with your feet. Okay, and as your foot goes up there, I'm holding it in place. Okay, very good, very good, keep going, swing your foot over. Swing your foot over, that's it, you got it, you're not going anywhere because I'm right here. Good? Alright, awesome, next? Okay, take your time, okay? If you want some, if you want some help, just holler, okay? I can either walk you through it or pace you through. Alright, where your right hand is, you wanna step over top of that onto the other side of that formation. So hold on to that rock there, yes, there, bring your left foot over towards your right foot. The left foot over towards your right foot. Your right foot was fine. No, 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 take your time, put your left foot, your left foot over next to your right foot.
Just right next to.
Yeah, just right next, right next to your right foot, so your feet are next to each other. Now, over here! There, you ready? There you go! That's, oh, and you got a good handhold, now take your right foot over top of that formation there. Or your left foot, over, not on top of it but on the other side of it so that you get a really good foothold. You're doing good, you really are doing good. Yeah, that's it, that's it, now just keep going forward up the crack. You're doing great, you're gonna catch up to her a little bit. Put your other foot over here, keep your body over top of your feet, yes. Yes, you got it, you ready? Foot, you got that one right, foot, foot, and hold on, there you go, you're doing, oop, you're doing good, you're doing really good. Awesome, alright. This one's, it's a crazy climb, I do it on my belly and slide down, hold on to the rocks, slide down, but I'm gonna stay here like this so that you're not gonna go anywhere. Okay, just get on your belly and slide down. Now if you take your time, get on your belly, don't wanna get your legs trapped, on your belly. Okay, now put your arms out as far as they go and then feel around, you'll feel, see there's rock there, you can get your foot jammed into something and get foothold. But behind you, you're not going anywhere. Just wanna get it down. You gotta dangle it so that you can find another place to put your foot. You did it yourself, I'm just standing in the way, case, you did it yourself. You have to use your whole length of your body, now you can probably stretch your arms out all the way and reach the floor. Reach the floor. There you go, piece of cake, right? Yeah, always does, now you could just go back and explore all you want and get on your belly and stretch your arms out as far as they go. And you should be able to reach, I'm gonna stay behind you just in case, you got it, awesome. That wasn't a muddy rock, that was a finger. Yeah, on your belly, arms out, now take your time, you're a lot shorter, you're gonna have a little trouble with this. So when you come down here, put your foot on my knee. Okay, now guide yourself down, there you go. Here we go. Okay, hold on to the edge of the rock, get on your belly and stretch your arms out and go down as far as you possibly can and you'll try to feel for some footholds, okay? Feel for footholds, put your, put your legs out, down, there you go, I'm behind you, if you fall, you're not going anywhere. Stretch out our arms as far as possible, okay, now feel around so you can find places to put your foot. Like, hold on, right foot there, okay, now can you put this one down a little bit more? Just slide down a little bit, there you go. It's not that bad, is it? You're doing things that you didn't think you could do.
I need a break.
Okay. We'll get a break in about a half hour. This is a union trip, we gotta stick to the schedule. I'm glad somebody got that. Okay, turn around, on your belly. Hold on to the rock, dangle your legs over the side and stretch your arms out as far as possible, as far as you can possibly go. Down a little more, okay, I'm behind you. You're, you're on my knee, just, no, 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 I'm telling you, just use my knee, put your weight on my knee, there you go. There you go, that's pretty good. Okay, wait a minute, you're, you're a little bit small, we'll leave you here, okay? We'll come back and get you next week. Okay, arms out as far as you can go, put your foot on my knee, okay, now step down. There you go, very good, no, that's not bad at all. You hit my covenels, look at, look at. No, 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 that's why they're there. I'd rather you trash them. Okay, you're gonna hold on to the edge, like where your hands are, yeah, anywhere, you're gonna be on your belly so that you're hanging your legs over the edge, okay? Then when you come down, take it slow and try to reach for footholds, if not, my knees right there, step on my knee, step on my knee, there you go. Ah, that was my foot! That's okay, don't worry about it, don't worry about it, that's what they're for. I'd rather you rip them up than trash your clothes.
Alright, this was not a race.
Okay.
I did not do that one a very efficient way, I can tell you that.
Hands, hands, hold on to like this and you're on your belly and dangle your feet over the edge. There you go, there you go, now get on your belly, I'm gonna be behind you, if you fall, you're gonna land on me, okay? Okay, now you gotta have your arms as straight as possible and you should be able to touch the floor. That was my foot, there we go, you got it, no problem at all, you got it? Anywhere. You gonna try, you got your way to do it? Okay, alright, that's cool.
There you go. You might have to get on your side to do that. Please don't struggle. If you struggle, then I'm losing faith in everybody. I'm glad you think so, I think it's fun too, and we're gonna head that way. Yes. Yeah, take your bag off trying to get through that hole.
You proud of me?
Who, me? I...
I'm a baddie. Ready? Baddie!
Baddie! You guys are, you guys are way too much fun. I love this.
I did it!
You having fun?
Uh huh.
Really?
Uh huh.
There she comes.
I love this smell of mud in the morning.
Me too, I leave the equipment in my car so that the next day it's been sitting there for a while, my car smells like this. Yeah, we're headed that direction.
Wait, I just wanna watch here and see everything.
Um, why did you try to take the narrow one?
Cause I can.
Okay. That's good, that's so good, okay, come on through.
Working on it.
Working on it.
Work in progress.
Getting there, getting there. Getting there. Doing good.
I wish.
Oh, come on, look at you! You're doing good, keep your helmet up at the high part, it's bigger.
What?
Wait a second, what are you doing?
I don't know. No!
Okay, see how it's bigger up at the top? Put your helmet through there.
Put my helmet through there?
Yeah, and then go sideways? Just like that.
Like that?
Yeah, sideways, you can squeeze.
I don't fit.
Exhale, exhale and squeeze.
Nope.
Yes you can, I can see you're almost through. Here, hold on to me and pull, pull on me, you can use me as a leverage. There you go!
My bag.
That wasn't so bad, was it?
That was very tight.
Very tight, no problem at all.
You did it!
Oh my gosh! Hi guys! You're good, it's okay.
Jerry's suctioned. Okay.
Are you gonna post this on YouTube?
What?
You gonna post this on YouTube?
Sure. It's, it's my name. I'll, I'll send the link.
To Miss Jerry.
I'll share the link with you guys. Alright, okay, you wanna go through sideways with your helmet through the big part? Or else, as much of your body through the big part as possible. There you go. You're sliding! You're doing good, you're doing really good. Yeah? You did good! Alright, they, they're up there, you can go down there if you want but then you gotta get back out. We'll use the last one?
Oh no, we got three more?
Three more? Alright, whenever you're ready. I see a foot, two feet, coming down. Sliding down. You take your pack off? Alright. Now you wanna try to stay through the big part.
Just pretty down. Okay. Is this a big part?
Up top, it's big. There you go. That's good, you're actually the most graceful going through there.
Oh really?
Yeah.
Good to know.
We're up here.
You got this Eve?
My legs are going to sleep. Who's next? We have what, one or two?
Two.
There they come. Now you wanna go through the larger part of the hole, right? See how the hole is bigger at the top than at the bottom, you wanna try to keep your body up high so that you can go through the bigger part, okay? That's it, just like that, yeah, sideways. Okay, try it again, get your, get your body all the way up into the upper half of the hole. Like that. That's it. That's it. Okay. Just relax. Find how, find how you can get your body through that, there you go. Helmet through the big part, through the big part. There you go! Are you the last one?
Daniela's next.
Danielle? Alright, do you think we should leave, just leave her here? Should we just leave her here?
Yeah, we should.
Danielle?
Bye Danielle, I'll see you in a year.
We'll see, we'll see you later, okay? Where's your backpack?
Danielle, drop your backpack down first.
Yeah, put your, put your backpacks through first, we can help with that. We'll let you. You wanna go through the largest part of the hole. So where's the largest part? Would be up top, right? So you wanna try to keep your body up as high as possible and through the top part. Yeah, gotta lift yourself up to go through.
This is gonna be so hard.
Yeah. It's not, it's not that easy but it's possible to do, the others did it, and you're doing it, you got it, just keep, keep yourself up high enough.
Easy peasy.
Easy peasy, you're not kidding, you made it look too easy. Okay, we're all the way up there, I love that, teamwork. Watch, no, this way, come this way, don't go off that edge. That would, that would, uh...
Wait, do you wanna go in there to help people up there?
That would hurt a little bit, I think. Alright, Ally, right?
Zoe.
Huh?
Zoe!
Zoe, I'm sorry.
Can I come down there?
I guess so, do you really want to? Okay, you can come down here, come down here, come along this ledge here and then there's a rock here that you can step on to make it easy to get down. You gonna wait for them? Okay, see, when you go in along this ledge, you can use these other things to push on to keep yourself up, okay?
See, when you're going along this ledge, you can use these other things to push on to keep yourself up, okay?
Ally, you wanna come join me down back here? Oh, this is so cool! You got some Mr. Bowling? They found us. Daddy! Flash running!
See, yes, there are two of them. Okay, well, just start moving down here. Give them some room. Okay, I'm gonna stay here.
Where are we going now?
This way. Come towards the line.
I'm not a bug.
That's okay, I'm not a bat. My. Here we go.
Into the thing of it? Into the thing of it?
Stay along here, and then we're gonna climb down here, so you're gonna have to move over, either move that way or...
Yeah!
I guess.
It's so hard. Oh my gosh!
You guys are doing so good! You're doing things that other people don't.
I'm so glad we went the hard way.
Yeah! There's a couple more really hard ways.
Oh, no, we also want...
We'll save them, we'll save them for another day.
Okay, thank God.
Okay, you're gonna come down here.
Where?
This way. And you're gonna slide along here and then there's a rock here that you can step down on. Okay?
Yeah.
You tired?
Yes.
You can use all of this to push against to keep yourself up there, okay? I'm standing on, on a rock on the floor.
At least we got our exercise in for today. Oh my gosh!
Yeah, this is full-blown cardio.
Or at least my exercise in for the next fifteen days. Yeah!
I think so, yeah.
I think, I don't, I don't have gym class on Monday, thank God. I have gym class to... Yeah, I have it on Tuesday. Guys, I think we're all gonna win the marshmallow bet.
Marshmallow?
Yeah, we had a marshmallow bet. We're gonna, we're gonna make some sort of s'mores tonight at our campsite. So, um, it said like whoever can stay and have the longest or whoever backs out has to give up one marshmallow tonight. So Eve, my dad, and Daniella have, um, they have decided to not have an extra marshmallow.
Marshmallows are good.
Yeah, it was Eve, then my dad and Daniella, so it was Eve first.
Oh, come on, you're in your glory here.
Come on, Miss Schilling! You can do it!
You did it! This ain't Crystal Cave!
I can hear the smog, am I?
Alright, sorry.
You're gonna come down this way, towards me. Come down towards me.